Call to order, the city council meeting for September 16, 2019. I'd like you to stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll?
Kenny?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Gustafson?
Here.
Clistic?
Present.
Belzak?
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum, just a few procedural notes tonight. We have an agenda tonight that's probably going to result in some discussion and questions. And if you are here for the item on the agenda that deals with the cannabis issue, and you can wait till that item comes up on the agenda, I would hope that you would wait and let us proceed through our initial portion of our meeting. If you do want to address that issue and you want to leave before that issue, that item comes up on our agenda, you're welcome to do that now. But you have three minutes, and no more than three minutes. So if anyone would like to address us on anything other than the cannabis issue, or the cannabis issue, you can do so now. If no one then, we're going to move to approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes tonight, city council meeting August 19, 2019, city council meeting September 3, 2019. Can I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
No.
No?
No. Because we have people absent.
Okay, we have people absent.
Yeah.
Okay. For the August 19, 2019, motion to approve, Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Kenny, any questions, comments? I think we made a correction to this one, or was it?
No, we made a correction to the September 3 one.
Okay. If no questions, the roll?
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
Abstain.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes and one abstention.
The motion passes. The minutes for the September 3, 2019, motion to approve, Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Questions or comments? And this is the one we made a correction to.
Correct.
If there's no further questions, the roll?
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Abstain.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes and one abstention.
It takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the Aldermen have communications? Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got one phone call this week from a Maria Searcher, and she was stating that she is in opposition to the cannabis. And that's all it is, so that's it.
Alderman Kenny?
I also have a communication from a Mariana Fogarty on Claremont, same issue, opposing the cannabis.
Alderman Sullivan?
I have a couple communications. I've been in conversation with Terry Pantaleo, she's a resident of Carriage Hill, about some property and possibly annexation. And we, I've given her some guidance, thanks to Mayor Marquez giving me some history. And she seems to be pursuing some things over in Brookridge. She was very appreciative of our efforts. Also, a communication from Mr. Corino, who is a resident on Evergreen Lane, just asking about when hydrants will be painted and freshened up. And I did talk to Dan Gombeck about that, and that that will be back on the agenda or plan for next year. And he did that. And then, lastly, resident Andrew Kelly in the Terra Hill neighborhood reached out to me with some input and feedback on driveway paving and some suggestions for further, you know, ideas, I guess, for preserving your driveways. And I did talk to Dan Gombeck about that, and I will be circling back with Mr. Kelly with some answers.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Sullivan?
Yes, I did receive two emails from individuals giving them their input regarding the cannabis vote tonight.
I'll move on.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one from Jolene Libitas, who sent me an email in regards to the cannabis, to vote no. So, that's all I have.
To vote no on the ordinance?
Or the ordinance, yeah. To ban.
To ban, okay.
Anybody else?
And I did receive a couple of emails as well, with, I'd say, five emails, three being to support the opt-out, two being to allow it.
Personally, I've received four emails today from individuals, nicely written emails, all asking that we support the opt-out ban. They didn't want their names mentioned, but they wanted it mentioned that they supported the opt-out. A week ago Friday, after coming back from court from Wheaton and having very disappointing news with Judge Fullerton supporting the consent decree, I was ready to leave the office on what was a very dreary Friday, and I went to my mailbox and I received a letter from a Darien resident that I'm going to read. It says, "Dear Mr. Marquez, thank you for being our mayor. My name is Juliana. I'm in third grade at Lay School. Lay School is so nice, I love it. What did you do this summer? I went to Michigan. I hope you had an amazing summer. Love, Juliana Flores." So I want to tell Juliana that I too had an amazing summer. I went to Orlando, and I had a great summer. And she made my day that day when she sent me this letter, and I just wanted to share that with all of you, that I do receive some very nice emails.
Of all your years, Mayor, is that probably one of the best letters you've gotten?
That's probably one of the best letters.
There you go.
And I want to thank Juliana. If she's watching, or if her parents are watching, I want to say thank you to her.
That good penmanship, too.
I know, I have to get my pencil out. That takes us to the Mayor's Report, and we have several items under the Mayor's Report. And the first is that we have a donation to the 100 Club tonight. I'm going to let Ron Kiefer come forward and explain what we've been doing with our blue lights, and he'll be presenting a check. So Ron, come on forward. And Andrew, from Representative Lions Club?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a group effort, and I want to thank the city of Darien, April with the Chamber of Commerce, and Andrew with the Lions Club. We all got together and wanted to honor our first responders, and we were able to light up Darien with almost 500 blue lights on 9/11. So, we were selling these blue lights, and now we have a checks, a couple of checks totaling $700 that is going to the 100 Club because of the support of the community. And I'd like our President Andrew to present it to... We need April in here. And, Mr. Mayor, you were very instrumental. I want the people to know that there were 138 bulbs sold at City Hall. So thank you for the support from the city.
It was, it was the ladies have the front run. Thank you, Andrew.
I don't think anybody knows what the 100 Club is.
Ron, before you leave the microphone, could you explain what the 100 Club is?
Yes, they are an organization that supports the families of fallen officers and firemen. So, and, you know, if the families need financial assistance, support, they're there to help them. And, you know, we want to do what we can to support our first responders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Our second item is consideration of a motion to advise and consent of the appointment of Nick Pitzer to the Economic Development Committee. As many of you know, Mr. Frank Burns, who was on that committee, asked to remove himself from that committee while he agreed with the committee, and he agreed with the, thought the people who were on the committee were well-qualified. He felt his contributions were minimal to the committee. And I asked him to stay on, and he stayed on for several meetings, but then he came to me and said he really felt that he needed to beg off, that he felt, again, his contributions were minimal. So, we advertised for this position. We had five applicants. I interviewed two of those applicants. Three received very nice letters, well, actually, four received not very nice letters, thanking them for their applications, and felt that Mr. Pitzer, due to his participation in our rotary, due to his status as an executive board member in our chamber, and the fact that he makes contributions to our different service groups in the city, was a very viable candidate and had a good skill set for the position. So I'm looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Mayor. I just got to say, he's done a great job filling out the applications. That was my big concern with other applicants, of not filling out the application form. So he did a wonderful job filling it out, so.
If no more questions, the roll?
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Nick, you need to come forward, get some more in?
Please don't go ahead. I have one more item, if I may.
I'm up here.
Yep. Up here now.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nick Pitzer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Economic Development Committee member.
Economic Development Committee member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And I have a card for you to sign. Yours, and now everybody can congratulate you.
Thanks.
Mr. Kiefer, you have one other thing?
Yes. Sorry, one oversight. We weren't able to do this without the help of Kinko Ace Hardware. I asked Jim Tokowski to be here tonight from Ace Hardware. They sold us the bulbs at cost, so that's why we were able to make the $700. So, thank you, Ace Hardware.
Thanks, Jim. I have one additional item that's not on our agenda. As a number of you know, last week, we lost a dear friend to the city of Darien, Kate Sullivan. She and her husband are the publishers of the Neighbors of Darien magazine. Kate was someone I did not know as well as I know some of you, but I got a chance to meet her this last year more often in some of the debates and some of the other activities. I found her to be a lovely woman to deal with, a caring and compassionate individual. She was also a very close friend of our former mayor, Kathy Weaver, who knew her close to 30 years. And again, on behalf of the city of Darien, I'd like to offer my condolences to the Sullivan family. And for those of you who like to know some information, Kate's memorial visitation will be at Modell Funeral Home, 7710 Cass Avenue here in Darien on September 18, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. And her massive Christian burial will take place at Our Lady of Peace Church on Thursday, September 19, at 10:00 a.m. And again, our condolences to Tim and his entire family, and on behalf of the city of Darien, we offer our heartfelt condolences. Anybody like to add to that? Mary?
I would, even though we shared the same last name, we weren't related, but I had the distinct pleasure of working with Neighbors Magazine. I started off as just a contributor to their community events section, and eventually became a staff member and editor, and was able to work very closely with Tim and Kate and pilot the start of other magazines in communities such as Lisle, Westmont, Downers Grove, and really admired their partnership, their commitment to community. Kate was very involved in the Chamber of Commerce and many, many nonprofit groups. She was a leader, an entrepreneur, a mentor, and just a very remarkable woman and very welcoming. And her sudden death is a huge loss to her beautiful family and really to Darien as well. And we're heartbroken, and I just pray for their family and wish them, you know, peace in their time of need and comfort.
Thank you, Mary. If there's nothing else, that takes us to the city clerk's report. Joanne?
No report this evening, Mayor.
Takes us to the city administrative report, Brian?
No report, Mayor.
No report. Department head information and questions for Police Chief Thomas. Alderman Clistic?
Thanks, Mayor. Under police report, I noticed a jump in car accidents. Is there like a certain location where the accidents have been happening, or just in general, if you could comment on that?
You would have to look at the data behind the numbers. I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, so for 2019, year-to-date, right now, we're at 74 accidents, similarly to last year, 2018, to the same amount of time, you're at 31, so a bit more than doubling. So I'm just curious, the location, and just in general, what type of, just small fender benders, or if there's something more serious?
Two things. I didn't look at it this time. I did look either last month or the month before, and I did notice that there was an increase in the number of private property accidents, so accidents within the parking lot of wherever, Walmart, Jewel, whatever. I don't know if that still continues to be a trend, and I did notice that there's not a huge increase in injury or accidents.
So classification, whether it's a parking lot or head-on collision, is considered just an accident all under the same umbrella for a classification?
Correct.
For us here? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Any questions for Mr. Gombeck? Alderman Kenny?
I do have one. And I apologize to you for not thinking about this sooner. It wasn't until Alderman Sullivan mentioned about paint on hydrants. I was in Brookhaven today, and I was kind of noticing that the lines, they just painted those lines out there long ago, right? In Brookhaven?
I know I did a couple different segments of it. Last year, I believe, was, they did one segment, and I believe this year, yeah, this year they did some more.
Can we follow up? Because I knew the busy part did a lot on the, on the south end. So on the north section, but the south portion, a lot near the donuts and the cleaners, and it's, it's very hard. And I think by winter time, we're going to run into some problems.
Yeah, we'll make sure we take a look at it. That was addressed last year, so it may have, may have some...
I just noticed it today when Alderman talked about the paint. I thought...
Sure, we'll take a look at that and get in touch with the owner.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, anything else for Mr. Gombeck? If none, that'll move us to our treasurer's report. Michael, the warrant?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 1920-11, in the amount of $858,120.56 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended September 12, in the amount of $261,832.18 for a total to be approved of $1,119,952.74.
Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions for our treasurer on the warrant? If none, the roll?
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
As you can see from your agenda, we have four monthly reports. And in our work session today, Treasurer Grant asked if he would only read the August 2019, so we're going to ask Mike to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as I also indicated, though, the, all the reports are indicated preliminary at the top, because pending the final issuance of the audit report by our outside auditors, Sickett, which will be presented at the next meeting, I'm indicating preliminary. The reason we don't get these reports on a monthly basis during that short period of time, is while the auditors are performing the audit, they sometimes make some adjustments, which would have some bearing on the numbers. So we're getting all caught up now. Don't anticipate any change in there, but it is still indicated as preliminary. That being said, next month, everything should be all in order, and we'll be doing one at a time for review. In the meantime, if you do have any questions as you're going through the four months, please feel free to get ahold of me after the meeting, or contact me separately, whatever's convenient for you. That being said, as of August 31, August 31, for the first four months of the fiscal year, general fund here reflects year-to-date revenue of $6,426,293, expenditures of $4,490,940, for a current balance of $3,549,603. That also reflects the transfer of the $3 million from the general fund to the capital improvement fund, which was discussed at the budget and approved at our last year's budget meetings. Water fund, year-to-date revenue $2,385,069, expenditures of $1,803,634, current balance of $2,218,681. Again, reflects the $800,000 transfer from the water fund to the water depreciation fund, which again was discussed and approved at the budget meetings last year. Motor fuel tax fund, year-to-date revenue $222,950, expenditures of $159,133 for a current balance of $412,158. Water depreciation fund, year-to-date revenue $7,217, expenditures of $53,171 for a current balance of $2,515,606. And the capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue $208,117, expenditures of $2,970,602 for a current balance of $5,474,770.
Any questions for Mike on the monthly report? If none, that takes us to standing committee reports. Do any of the Aldermen have reports to give to the council tonight? Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mayor. Next Monday, September 23, municipal services will have a meeting in council chambers at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan?
The Economic Development Committee had a meeting last week. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 7 at 7:00 p.m. here in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The police committee meeting was canceled this evening for lack of agenda items. Our next scheduled police committee meeting will be on Monday, October 21, across the street in the police training room.
Thank you. Questions and comments, agenda-related? Yes, sir. Please come forward, just state your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Chris English, and I'd like to speak about the agenda item concerning adult use cannabis establishments. I followed the debate in Springfield on the removal of cannabis prohibition. I support it. Knowing that this was coming down the road, I had occasion to go to Massachusetts in California this year. And I stopped in to a establishment in each state to see exactly what we're in store for. So I'd like to give you some of my opinions and some of my observations, if you will. These establishments, they're modern, they're well-designed, well-constructed. They feature sales rooms about the size of this room. They have sales positions of about five to six positions with trained people behind them making the transactions. In both of my visits, all of the sales positions were occupied by customers, and this is in the middle of the day on weekdays. The products that they sell are tested, they're dated, they're sealed. You know the strength of your product, there's laboratory results on them, you know the age, and you know the expiration date. The products are put into tamper-proof, child-resistant packaging, and least, but not least, your ID is checked when you enter the store. These stores have security, pretty heavy security presence in the California one. And I would have to say, from my observations of these establishments, ladies and gentlemen, they're nothing to be afraid of. These are substantial, modern businesses equal to or better than most of the private, non-corporate businesses that we have in this town. If a California-style adult-use dispensary appeared in the underused shopping center across the street from me, I would welcome it. It would not shock me at all. And I think it would be a, an addition to the community. So I would say, if you, before you make any decision, if you could make some investigations and see what the market's going to bring, I think you could, it would be very useful for us and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to come forward at this time? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Jolene Libitas.
You might want to lower that microphone a little bit.
Yeah, I'm always going to do this. I'm Jolene Libitas. We talked earlier about how long you lived in Darien. I've lived here about 13 years. And I too am wanting to come forward to talk about my concerns regarding opening a business of cannabis in Darien or other cities in this area. I am a licensed clinical social worker in the state of Illinois. I'm also a certified alcohol and drug counselor in the state of Illinois. I've been working as a social worker, clinical social worker, since 1985. I primarily work in mental health and drug abuse addiction. We have seen over time, and we, I, when I grew up, was always told marijuana is a gateway drug, and it still sure is. It's a gateway drug. It increases problems with social issues with the youth, especially those that are developing, their brains are still developing, they have, can have psychological and intellectual, intellectual developmental problems. And now, I'm not talking about the medical marijuana for adults, I'm talking about this, this new business with the cannabis. They're often also put near places where alcohol or gambling establishments are put. Someone had mentioned concerns about other cities, or mentioned positive things about other cities. I would defer you to look at the data regarding Denver and their dismay and over having, city having approved cannabis. There are very many problems with the business itself. Weed can go missing within the business. There's theft by employees. This isn't for everybody, this isn't, this is just saying this can't happen. There's inaccurate weighing, that creates the theft. People can break in, it's a cash-only business. What bank is wanting to deal with a cash-only business? You're going to have to have a security guard, you're going to have to have a guard, one of those van, guard vans, I can't remember what you call them? Security vans with armed people. So how secure is this going to be, really? Because that's what you need to have. Taking cash to a bank, those people can be, there can be police activity because they are, the vehicle is being taken over by vandals, and there could be shots fired, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all those other bad things, let alone what the negative, negative consequences to the youth in their mental and psychological development. I'm also concerned regarding, how is the data going to, if this passes, how is the data for the police? How are they going to collect a marijuana DUI, so to speak? How are they going to ascertain that differently from a DUI arrest? Is that going to be now related back to where that person purchased the marijuana? And if so, are there going to be consequences for saying? for same? And that's, that's all I had to say. That sums it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to address this issue? Mr. Ray, you want to come forward? Sir?
My name is Mike Petruska.
Mike?
I have lived in Darien for...
Come on over, raise the microphone.
Hi. My name is Mike Petruska. I have lived in Darien for about 10 years. I would like to echo gentleman's statement in regards to cannabis establishments. Having been to other states in the country that have legalized the sales, I can tell you straight up that most of those stores are like Apple stores. They're a high-end establishment. They're guarded by the police or security. Before you enter, you have to show your ID. And I can tell you that they're not run like liquor stores. When you go to a liquor store, most of the time in the window, you see signs and advertisements telling you how much Bud Light you can get for $10. With cannabis stores, you do not see any advertisements at all. Most of them are low-key stores with just the logo. And like I said, they look pretty much modern. And, you know, regardless of whether we allow it or ban it, you know, obviously, people will still be able to use it in a, you know, in a city. But, you know, banning it, it's just, you know, throwing money away that we could probably be getting for other purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just please.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Giuliani. Though appearances may suggest otherwise, I don't smoke marijuana. I've never done drugs in my life. I'm not here to argue in favor of my own interests, but in favor of what I think are the best interests, interests of the city of Darien. I heard a lot of statistics presented at the last meeting that run counter to what I've read about the impact of recreational marijuana. Without knowing the sources, I can only assume that those statistics were based on outdated information from the earliest days of legalization. While traffic accidents did rise in Colorado, Oregon, and Washington in the first six months following legalization, they were back to normal within a year. This temporary increase is likely due to a surge of new inexperienced users. An April 2017 study from the American Public Health Association found that three years after recreational marijuana legalization in Colorado and Washington, changes in vehicle mortality rates were not statistically, statistically different from those in similar states without recreational legalization. A March 2018 study from the National Bureau of Economic Research had a similar conclusion. A February 2015 study from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration found that drivers who use marijuana are at a significantly lower risk for a crash than drivers who use alcohol. Drivers who tested positive for marijuana were no more likely to crash than those who had not used any drugs or alcohol prior to driving. In regards to concerns about an increase in crime, a March 2019 study from the Journal of Economic Behavior and Organization found no causal effects of marijuana legalization on violent or property crime, except for in California where it decreased by 20%. A 2016 study from the Journal of Drug Issues and a 2017 study published in Contemporary Drug Problems came to similar conclusions. If you allow the sale of alcohol in Darien, there is no reason to oppose the sale of recreational marijuana. According to the 2015 federal study I cited earlier, the danger of marijuana is a mere fraction of the danger of alcohol. Denying marijuana sales here would be shortsighted and a wasted opportunity. Willbrook estimates, estimates they'll receive $350,000 to $400,000 annually for marijuana taxes. In a year, we could replace the money that's now tied up in a loan to Carriage Greens Golf Course. Marijuana sales will not ruin Darien. It will still be the same nice place to live, but the money it generates could be used to make it even nicer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? If there's no more questions or comments, we move to old business. There being no old business, we move to our consent agenda. We have three items. I'll read each of them. Item A is consideration of a motion granting a waiver of the $50 a day fee for the Class J temporary liquor license for our Lady of Peace. Item B is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution rejecting all bids for the foundation repairs consisting of waterproofing and restoration of the Ole School and direct staff to rebid the project for fiscal year 2021. And item C is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution rejecting all bids for the preparation and painting of the communication tower located at 1041 South Frontage Road and to direct staff to rebid the project for fiscal year 2021. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, second by Alderman Belzak, and the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
It takes us to new business, and under new business, we have one item. Consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending Title III of the Darien City Code Business Regulations, adding new Chapter 10, prohibition of recreational cannabis business establishment within the city of Darien thereto. And again, this is what they call an opt-out ordinance. We have Attorney Murphy here with us tonight to answer questions. Do we have a motion first to approve? Shower, second by Alderman Sullivan. Questions and comments? Discussion. Alderman Belzak?
So, in our previous discussions, and from what I've heard this evening, everyone's talking about dispensaries. Well, in reading through the packet that we received, there are six different businesses that are cannabis-related that can be started in a community. Craft grower, cultivat, cultivation center, dispensary, infuser, processor, and transporter. While I have heard people talking about dispensaries, and I'm still not 100% certain why they don't think it's appropriate, since it is a legal product as of January 1st, I haven't heard anybody, or had, we haven't had any discussion in regard to the other five businesses. None of the other five deal with the public whatsoever. They're talking about growing the product, cultivating the product, infusing products, processing, and transporting it. We have warehouses in Darien that are unfilled right now. I really don't understand any reason why we would opt out of any of the other five or six.
Several years ago, we had an opportunity to vote on an ordinance that would have established a medical or medicinal marijuana site within the city of Darien. And according to our zoning at that time, the only possible location was by our Public Works facility. And we voted not to have a medicinal. So, we did discuss that, and that was probably, I believe, two years ago. So, that's why we don't have that one. We've never discussed the other ones. Michael?
I guess I have a question, and maybe this relates, I don't know if Mayor, Attorney Murphy or not, but Tom, those other businesses, we would generate our revenue from the dispensaries by assessing the 3% tax. I'm guessing we wouldn't get any revenues from the others. So, why would you, why would you allow the others if you're not even generating any tax revenue from it?
Why wouldn't we?
I mean, the only argument I...
Why would we allow any business in Darien? Why would we allow a candy manufacturer? Why would we allow?
Any distribution center.
Any distribution center. It's the exact same thing.
Is that a fact, John, that the other businesses don't generate any tax revenue for the city?
That's correct, only indirectly property tax. If we can just, so everybody understands the plain English of it, the cultivation centers, they're the wholesalers. Dispensaries are the retailers. The focus for municipal revenue is on the retail sales. So, there's, I think Alderman Clistic had a question on the wholesalers, whether there's additional tax revenue that can be derived by the city. The answer is no, because this law preempts home rule authority, particularly on matters of financial. So, the taxes are the taxes. I think the rationale for that is that with this new industry coming in, they didn't want to give the local communities carte blanche to tax businesses to death. But, the comment is accurate that, that there's no direct revenue resulting to the city from other than the retailers.
That's why I'm assuming the discussion is heading toward the dispensary site as...
And I understand that. However, my point is, I don't see a reason that we wouldn't allow someone who wanted to process marijuana there. They're not dealing with the public. It's, it's in a, in a warehouse or in a, in a building, just like any other business that we have in Darien. And I really don't see the point. Or transporting, warehousing. Again, you're right. Tax revenue's not there like a dispensary is, but we wouldn't, again, turn down a candy manufacturer because we're not getting revenue from them, because they're not selling retail products, or any manufacturer.
Anyone else? Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, and, and please bear with me. I've got a brief prepared statement that I would, I would like to go through here real quickly. And it's, you know, my wife and I have, you know, have lived in Darien for over 30 years, so we truly care about what goes on in this community. And I've spent a lot of time researching, researching this and having various discussions with residents, and also with the former older woman of Ward 6. You know, I understand that, you know, there are some people out there that hear the word marijuana and don't want any part of marijuana. However, legalized recreational cannabis is now starting in Illinois in 2020. I mean, there's, there's no stopping it. Personally, and a lot of the residents of Ward 6 live within a five or 10-minute walk of Woodridge and Downers Grove. So, what they do is going to have a definite impact on the people in Ward 6. So, we could be surrounded by dispensaries around Darien and not getting a dime for it, but still paying the burden. You know, I, I really think that, you know, we've, we've, so we're, we're going to, we're going to pay the price of it, even if we have opt-in or opt-out. So, don't fool yourself. You're not going to be impacted. The police is going to be impacted. And I think because of these reasons and stuff, I think it's, it's important that we do allow the dispensaries to, to operate in Darien. In addition, you know, I do, don't favor wait-and-see attitude, because if you do that, there are only so many licenses that are going to be issued. And if you lose out, once again, we could be surrounded with this dispensaries and not get a dime for it. Okay? Because we're not out in the sticks somewhere. We're right next to these communities. And we've got six or seven communities right adjacent to Darien. So, you will be impacted. Now, the one thing in respect to the location of the stores, you know, I do favor putting them on the outskirts. For example, close to where I live, at Chestnut Court, would be ideal. You've got Woodridge in one corner, Downers on the other, and Darien on the other corner. So, it'd be a good place where people would not have to drive through the community of Darien to get to the stores. And it's a high-visibility area. And just the other last thing I want to say is that, you know, I am against the on-premise, premise consumption, you know, not allowing the cannabis to be consumed at the establishments themselves. And I think that's something too that we can, down the road, that we can go ahead and disallow. I think, I think that piece of it is important. But, you know, we are, let's not fool ourselves. We're going to be impacted by this. You're not going to escape it. It's in Illinois. It's going to be probably in every state within the next two, three years and be legal on a federal purpose. And don't, don't, don't take off to Canada because it's legal up there and it's only 19 years old up in Canada. So, you aren't going to escape it. So, I think the best thing we can do is try to get the most out of, you know, this situation and stuff. And I think that tax revenue would go a long way to paying for various programs for the kids. You could end up having on mental health type of programs that you could have. So, there's a lot of ways you could use that money. So, if we're going to pay the burden, let's get the benefit. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Kenny?
You know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've done some, some reading on this too. And as a Realtor, I'm, I'm concerned with some of the numbers that have come out of Colorado and California and Washington regarding homelessness. And the verdict is out still. And is, the numbers spiked up because of the allowance of recreational marijuana? Or was, you know, what came first, chicken or the egg? Or is it, you know, homelessness population from other states coming into the, to the states that allow it? Either way, you're, you're still, you're still increasing homelessness population. I would not want to see, you know, I've, I've worked down at Homeless Ministry downtown Chicago for, for eight years. And, you know, that, that's the one thing that concerns me from, from that standpoint. You know, it's, it's ironic, though. We just appointed Nick Pitter to the Economic Development Committee. And he stood up here and he swore to uphold the United States Constitution. Yet cannabis is, is not, is not, is illegal from, from the federal government, which I thought was, which is pretty ironic. They were sitting here voting on something that the federal government has put a ban on, you know, for, lack of a better term. I'm sorry? And we all, you know, so I have to, more than half this room took that, that same oath. So, I've got residents that say, no, I don't want to see it in here. I, Eric, Alderman Gustafson, I, I respect, I respect your thought, but I think at, at some point, we can't always change, chase the dollar. And I think, you know, you know, I've heard it once, somebody once say, principles never change, activities do. And I think this is one of those, I think this is one of those, this is one of those cases, so.
No, but you can't stick your head in the sand and think it's not going to impact you either.
That's fine.
You know.
Alderman Shower?
For us to turn around, and I'm, you know, I've been sitting on the city council for 10 years, and as I like to say, I've always been the numbers guy. And whether we make 300,000, 30,000, or 3 million, or whatever the issue may be, there's two things that pop into my mind when it comes to this. The first question is the quality of life in the city of Darien. And for myself, for my kids, for me personally, I do not want to see it in the city of Darien because of equality of life. But then I also look at the situation about the fact that, oh, it's 300,000 bucks. It's great revenue. We could pay for this. We could pay for that. There's too many ancillary costs that are going around this that we're not going to anticipate. And I've seen it too many times in different, you know, communities. Hey, if we have a situation in Colorado where we turned around and we had an increase here, we can increase some, you know, something, you know, DUIs or whatever, that means that we're going to have to increase our police in, in order to take care of something. So, the, you know, the cost to turn around the ancillary in this situation is not going to be offsetting what we're making off of it. And that's my opinion, so.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Alderman Belzak?
It's more of a question for Attorney Murphy. In regard to zoning, in the event we don't opt out and we can allow dispensaries, how limited can our zoning be? Would we have to create new zones that would be cannabis, cannabis zones? Or, or how exactly would that work?
To answer your first question first, the law says that a municipality may prohibit or substantially limit.
So that...
So, that's about as broad as you can get. The, within the context of that, we would require, if there was analysis, we'd have text amendments that would make cannabis dispensing facility as defined to be either a permitted use or a special use in certain areas. And within that, we would have the ability to limit the number of facilities, no different, I guess, than liquor licenses. So, the, the, the answer really is we have pretty much carte blanche authority to, to regulate the dispensary.
So, in your opinion, we could say we will have one dispensary license for Darien, and we could limit it to the major shopping malls of, that are on 75th and on Cass, as, like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Kind of piggybacking on what Alderman Belzak said, but it would still be at the discretion of the property managers, property owners, if they chose to lease to a dispensary, correct?
100%. A landlord still has complete right, tenant choice.
Alderman Vaughn?
I appreciate everything everyone has, has said, and, you know, all the research that's been done. And I've traveled to most of these states where it's legalized. I've actually been to a conference of, where medical, for marijuana. And I tried to get an inside scoop on, you know, how does this industry operate? Can it be valuable to our community? And I didn't see any red flags of how it would not be valuable to the community, especially when we talk about an economic boost to, to, to Darien. And we're trying to do a lot of development and, and trying to do a lot of things with our downtown area. I think that, you know, this, I think, I think a dispensary had value... I think that, you know, this, I think, I think a dispensary add value, growers would add value to Darien. So I don't think we should be shortsighted, as someone said earlier. We shouldn't be shortsighted, we should be open-minded. We should be visionaries and see 10 years down the road and see what our needs will be. And I think last, last session, we talked about, you know, police pensions and how we're going to subsidize that and make sure that they're provided for later on in the future. So we can partner with these companies and see, and make sure they have a stake in the community. We can control that. Make sure they have a partnership in the community where they're giving back to education. We can use the funds for our, you know, pension funds. And we can, we can, we can control that of how those funds get spent and provide, provide the necessary, and make sure the needs of Darien are being met. So I think it's, I think it's, I think it's in our best interest to be open-minded to this, to this issue, so.
Thank you. Alderman Clister?
Not, not really. The survey we did as a city, majority of residents, I think it was like 55 or 55 to 45 was in favor. So I represent, you know, constituents in my ward and, you know, survey came back positive. So I sort of neutral on it.
Anyone else in the audience want to come forward and say anything? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Fred Wilson. I'm a 30-year resident of Darien. And your survey, sir, how many people responded? In a town of over 20,000?
Five hundred and thirty-three.
Five hundred. And we don't know whether they're homeowners or not. True. And to the Alderman here, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with you. To suggest that we can do good for the children of Darien by supporting this, I find to be ludicrous. Thank you.
Well, it's already legal in Illinois. And to fight it, it would have been a battle down in Springfield.
Don't use our kids as balance for your decision.
I understand. I respect your opinion.
Anyone else?
Just to answer something that Alderman Gustafson said he does not want to adopt to wait and see. This council opted out of video gaming years ago. We decided at that point, we wanted to see where it went, how it was developed. After about a year, I don't, not sure if it was a year or even two years, we came back and decided, we saw what was going on, we decided to go and enact that. We do receive revenue from that now, which we utilize. When I read through Alderman Murphy's report to us, there seems to be a lot of unanswered questions. So Eric, when I said if we waited a year to see where this developed, maybe the state would have some of this ironed out in a year.
The only problem is, is that they may have it ironed out, but there's no licenses left. So you're not, you're not, you're not going to get the revenue in Darien. And Downers and Willowbrook and everybody else could have all the stores, we have all the problems, and we get no revenue. That's my only concern. Because they are going to limit the number.
Let me, let me, let me answer that. According to the law, October 19th, the state of Illinois is going to issue applications for 19 marijuana dispensary licenses as of October 19th. As of January 1st, the only licenses for recreational cannabis will be by previous medicinal cannabis distributors.
That's correct.
The state of Illinois, then, will start issuing additional licenses in February and March with a possible total of 500 for the year.
For all of the state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois, correct. I've had conversations with Mayor Trilla, I've had conversations with Mayor Grasso. I'm not sure where those communities are going, to be quite honest.
Now, just, just one point of clarification. There is also a restriction in the number for City of Chicago in this entire area.
I realize that.
That it does get even fine-tuned even farther down. So we're in, we're bundled in there with the City of Chicago. And I know the City of Chicago is going to be out there trying to get as many licenses as they possibly can.
The other thing to, to speak in your favor is that they're going to look at depressed areas as
Correct.
...economic opportunities for those communities to bring themselves back from the blight that they're current.
That's correct.
So I understand that. I'm very familiar with all this. I've read through it numerous, numerous times. We don't know what our surrounding communities are going to do. We have no awareness of that right now, we don't. As far as the, you don't misstate when you say that we're going to suffer consequence. We are, we're going to, you know, people are going to go to another community and buy it. I do know Claretton Hills had a discussion last week, and Claretton Hills voted against having this. I know my community that's already said no.
Naperville too.
I know Naperville has said no, and if there's
But Naperville's mayor is now trying to change the mind. The mayor, the mayor there is very, very favorable.
Actually, that dispensary was awarded a recreational license in Naperville. And according to the bill, you can't
You can't stop it.
You can't stop it. Once they have it.
Yeah. Naperville had a medicinal, so they had to honor that medicinal by allowing it to have a recreational. I agree with you.
Yep.
But their council did vote down the idea of recreational. They have to deal with that themselves. So there are communities that are opting out of this. I just want to mention that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not trying to sway you one way or another. I appreciate everybody's comments.
I totally agree with you. There are some.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. You want to come forward again?
My name is Jolene Libidas. I'm in Ward 2. I'm a clinical social worker and drug and alcohol counselor. This is a slap in the face to our children if we open up a dispensary. Mental health, excuse me, it doesn't go to children, but the parents have children that go to dispensaries. There are consequences. You do not know all the fallout from marijuana being in a person's home that's not supervised. We have a lot of latchkey children. I was even a latchkey child. So you've got problems right there. You've got problems with regulation in terms of policing. Cash business, there will be break-ins. There will be thefts by employees. There will be with the marijuana growth. Pesticides put on marijuana now, who's going to, who's going to look over that? No, the state isn't, the state isn't doing anything about that regarding pesticide regulation and how it will impact a person who takes marijuana. They're not doing that. So I still challenge you, and especially for all of our youth that we're setting an example for. I don't care if this is a slippery slope and it's going to happen in the future, it shouldn't happen now. There's too many statistics, too much problems that can filter down to the children. And I've had five that have grown up and gone through Hinsdale South High School. And that, without the marijuana, there was enough going on in that building and around the high school that was, you didn't want to see, didn't want your kids a part of. Add this to it, you've got 18-year-olds in high school, you've got 18-year-olds can sell at school. It's going on now. It's a big mistake. There will be repercussions. And financial shouldn't be a worry. It should be the youth and the impact upon the mental health and the drug addiction of adults and children. That people are our main focus, not the bottom-line dollar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I know I don't get to vote on this, but I'm always happy to get my two cents in. You guys all know that. In my mind, yeah, I'm not for it, but I'm not for it for, Eric, I hear what you're saying, but my problem with it is, I know the state approved it. So I know we're under the thumb of the state. I, as much as I love revenue as much as the next guy, I mean, anybody that's been on this council knows I love revenue as much as possible, and Alderman Belzak even more. I think the state just put the cart before the horse. I don't think they did all their homework. And, and I think they're trying to dump it off on us. We can't, we can't really do that homework. I think we really need more statistics. I really agree with the direction the mayor is sort of indicating that, and I was part of this with the video gaming too, and we are getting some decent revenue out of the video gaming, but we took a step back. Let's know the facts before we jump into it. I hear what you're saying, we may be limited in the numbers we can get, but there's all sorts of questions has been indicated. Will they go to the low-income areas rather than the higher-income areas? What are the true numbers you're going to be getting out of those? I just don't feel there's enough information to act at this point. And I think the state sort of shoved it down everybody's throat, and everybody's getting excited about the extra 3% tax you can get on it. And all I'm saying is, don't do that 3% just to make me happy. And whether those amounts are going to the kids, I mean, I know how these budget meetings go. We've been through enough of them, where we find a lot of different directions for them to go. And I don't necessarily think the kids are necessarily going to be priority one when we look at the extra revenue from this.
We can make them priority one.
But, no, all I'm saying is, I think it's been thrown on us by the state, and I think it's sort of premature to jump into it. And I guess I'm of the opinion that wait until we get more clarification and more study. That's why I asked the chief even in the last meeting to try and give his input as far as his reaction, his reading on it. From what I understand, also, it's difficult to distinguish, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, to distinguish if people, a person is DUI because of alcohol, you have the breathalyzer and you have tests you can do for that. Is it true that you cannot really distinguish it and for the sake of cannabis? And I know, again, if you have neighbors that are doing it, you're still going to be exposed to it. I know that argument. But that doesn't make, it's like my kids, just because this kid said it, doesn't mean that it's right, so.
There's a different, there's different tests. So when you're driving while intoxicated with alcohol, there's a breathalyzer test that can be administered and administered right away. There's not the same type of test for marijuana recognition. And for a long time, there was no standard, and I believe there's now a standard of five parts per billion or whatever. There is a test, and there is the ability to monitor it.
Alderman Vaughn?
So there's a plan in place then, right? Where if, you know, this happens, you guys are prepared to deal with it?
Well, not necessarily. There's what's called Drug Recognition Experts, DREs, and the state has woefully understaffed any DREs, and we have none in Darien at this time because they don't provide the classes very frequently.
Do you know if other states had to increase their police officers because of legalized marijuana in their states?
I don't.
Do you have any data that proves that?
The Driver Recognition Experts, it's a 72-hour program. In the article I read, I don't know if you sent that out or Brian sent it to me, but there's, a lot of officers choose not to go through it because as extensive as it is, you have to be tested every two years. There's not a lot of them around, and like you said, there's not a lot of funding for that training.
They're just, they don't offer them very frequently either, and that's probably one of the biggest things, just not offering them.
And what is the cost of that training to your knowledge? Do you?
I don't know.
Okay. I just wanted to state one thing. I think, you know, everyone here, you should read the bill. If you have time, read the bill. It'll answer a lot of your questions. When I went to that trade show and I listened to some of the moderators, they actually praised Illinois for having the most comprehensive bill compared to every other state that was legalized. They said Illinois was the most comprehensive bill they've ever seen. So, especially with the social equity portion of it, where it focuses on underserved communities and it's trying to bring back, you know, a social status for those communities where they can start growing and taking those tax dollars so they can start growing and investing in communities. So that social equity portion is probably the most important part. But if you have time, read it, don't speculate, read it, you know?
And, you know, a big part of that bill too was expungement of people's records and stuff, which I think is huge because I've had a friend of the families that got into that process and stuff and had to go through an exhaustive expungement process just for a tiny little bag of weed that they had in their car. So I think, I think the state did a phenomenal job of, you know, taking their, my understanding of the first state that went through the complete legislature to get this bill passed. So, I mean, they did their homework. And they've given us municipalities a lot of flexibility.
Anything else? Anything else from the council, anything else from the audience? Yes, sir.
I'll keep, I'll keep this very short. One argument that I feel favors the adult dispensaries is this will be our first attack on the black market and the criminals that support it. It's the black market that's giving the stuff to our kids and offering even worse things. So let's get, let's get these criminals out of our community and get this thing controlled, and I think we'll all be better for it.
No, I think, if I responded, I think you brought up a great point because that is important. Because a lot of that marijuana that's out there now in the black market is cut by things like fentanyl and stuff that's out there, that extremely deadly and stuff. So if we can get, you know, reduce the black market and at least make this stuff safe, safer for the kid, for people that do use it, young and the old.
Anything else?
One more thing. I just have to focus on the job market. From what I've read, it's going to, by 2022, there's going to be a half million jobs created from this industry. So, you know, it's providing value to people that's looking for work, you know, that wants to get into an industry that's growing. So, you know, that's, that's an important part too, the job market and the increase in labor.
Yes, Alderman Shower?
Just for clarification and just for the people that are at home, and we can read the ordinance and everything, but an "aye" vote is basically saying no to having marijuana in the city of Darien, and a "no" is basically opening it to it.
An "aye" vote means you're supporting the opt-out ordinance. A "nay" vote means that you're opening up the discussion in terms of zoning and creating ordinances to have a dispensary.
And I just want the people at home to understand that, so.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
Okay, now I'm more confused now than before. Okay? So if, so if I, if I don't want, if I don't want this, I'm voting no.
Yes, a yes vote means no weed.
A yes vote means no weed.
Yep.
You're voting, you're voting to support the, the opt-out. You have to, you have to, a yes is supporting the opt-out ordinance, which means no dispensary.
Thank you.
Joanne, you want to reread it then?
The title on the ordinance?
Yes.
The title on the ordinance is, it's an ordinance amending Title III of the Darien City Code Business Regulations by adding new Chapter 10, Prohibition of Recreational Cannabis Business Establishments Within the City of Darien thereto.
Sorry. Thank you.
If there's no more questions or comments, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Nay.
Belzak?
Nay.
Clistic?
Nay.
Gustafson?
No.
Kenny?
Aye.
Three ayes and four nays. Motion?
The motion fails. We'll instruct the city administrator and staff to begin working on ordinances and zoning for the establishment of a cannabis dispensary within the city of Darien.
I don't know the agenda you have next for the planning and development, but it would normally, because it's a zoning, it would go there, hopefully at the next meeting, which would come back to the city council, first meeting in October, to again, get the ball rolling with the plan commission. So we can get some direction.
Would you say about two and a half months to do this?
Yes, because staff is going to have, sorry. Staff's going to have to give an options memo, probably commission will have to discuss it pre-public hearing, get direction from the commission in terms of what their recommendations will be, go to public hearing on that. And, you know, we can be preparing ordinances as we come along in terms of, I think, Tom, one of the things you mentioned is, you know, Alderman Gustafson, limit on the number. I mean, it's 100% wide open in terms of extent of regulation.
But I'm thinking
But I think two and a, I think we can get it done before the end of the year.
But I think that initial direction, John, that you're mentioning should come from the council, right? In terms of number of license, general location, instead of opening that up to the plan commission to determine how many licenses, if any, there should be
Yeah, ultimately, well, this is, this is an unusual zoning matter because it's a text amendment that is being originated by the council as opposed to a map amendment on a particular piece of property that's coming from developer. So in the ordinary zoning case where somebody's proposing to rezone a property, you're the, you're the catcher. Here, in a real sense, the council is the pitcher because you need to give an initial policy direction. So I don't know how you want to do that at the next council meeting or
Well, that's what I'm thinking now, the municipal services meets in a week from tonight, and they could give some direction, I think, in terms of number of license, general zoning, and they could give some direction, I think, in terms of number of license, general zoning, some parameters for the plan commission to work on, and those parameters could be, you know, confirmed by the city council at the next meeting, and then it could go forward to the plan commission. So we have, again, we're not going to nail down everything, but some parameters on the issue.
Yes, the limitation in our code, because the statutory language is so favorable, we can even prescribe not only the location or the number of licenses, but we can limit the location not simply by zone, but also by geographic area within a zone. So not every, you may decide that not every B2 location is acceptable. Let me mention that if, that it seems to me that that would be the better direction to go, rather than saying they're going to be special uses, because when you get right down to it, this is, the dispensing facilities, the retail facilities are a facility that sells a commodity, a legal commodity. So they're, you know, ordinarily special uses might have potential special problems associated with them from a zoning standpoint, meaning parking, that sort of thing. And with this, you know, one of the things I'd ask you to consider is, is it easier to just say they're permitted, but only in these limited areas? Rather than having them listed as special uses everywhere, because you're going to end up, there won't be any meaningful criteria.
Yeah, I think that's one of the more important ones that I think the committee should talk about in a week, and then send that back to the council, the recommendation.
You're saying going to municipal services first?
In a week, to get, to make a recommendation to the council, like we do on most of our issues. So they would talk about maybe, you know, special use, permitted use, should we limit the number, should we limit it not just by the zoning district, but maybe by location, certain areas? And those parameters then could be confirmed by the city council. So when it goes to the plan commission, you know, they're not off on a wild goose chase, but they have some
But it ultimately has to then go to plan commission.
For public hearing.
For public hearing, and then it ultimately has to go back to municipal services, doesn't that, isn't that the chain?
Well, it typically would go back to municipal services
After plan commission.
For a final, yeah, for the final ordinance that's written.
Right, before it comes to city council.
Again, correct, yes.
But the plan commission on something like this, where it's originating with council, they're going to, first thing, they're going to ask, well, what does the city council want?
Yeah.
Right. But it's where the, it would be at the plan commission meeting that the public hearing would take place.
That is correct.
Yeah.
I just want to set the expectation for our viewers and people in the audience, what the, you know, because obviously, planning commission preschedules meetings twice a month, as needed. So, I mean, obviously, they have one this Wednesday, it's not going to happen then, so then we're looking into October.
Yep, right.
Because it's still got to go to municipal services.
Anything else that the council members have to announce? Any announcements?
I do.
Mary?
Got papers everywhere, okay. I do. I would like to, on behalf of Hinsdale South High School, announce that they will be holding their fall musical called Fiddler on the Roof. It will be November 1 through the 3 at the Hinsdale South Auditorium. There will be performances on Friday at 7:00 p.m., Saturday at 1:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m., and Sunday at 1:00 p.m. And my son will be in it, but besides that, along with many other children. Probably by far, and Tom can probably echo this, probably most like, the biggest thing that happens at the high school that involves, a culmination of, you know, over 100 students are involved in this. So I highly encourage all the aldermen and people in the audience to attend it. It's an incredible showcase. You would think you're at a Broadway show, and I'm really not joking.
Mazel tov.
Mazel tov. I'll get you a part next time, Joe.
I played around the book seller many, many years ago.
I bet you did.
Anything else from the aldermen? Anything from the audience? Anyone like to make any announcement from the audience? I need a motion to adjourn. Alderman Sullivan, second alderman. Vaughn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Turning the microphones off.